For this meeting for Monday, July twenty first, Jordan, would you start us off with the roll call, please?
Please respond by stating present, Councilmember Ronan.
Present.
Foberg.
Present.
Lee Belt.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E Conger.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Norv Strup.
Present.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Present, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business here tonight will be to approve this week's agenda, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Lee Belt, second, E Conger, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, next is our approval of the minutes, we've got a city council meeting which occurred on July seventh, two weeks ago, and then we've got a payroll section which was amended at some point later. Not taking place during the meeting, so I would take a motion to approve those minutes with that adjustment.
Move to approve the minutes with the amendment?
Second.
Motion Nelson, second, Ward, anyone have anything on these minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we've got quite a lengthy consent calendar here today, the first item of which is nearly, or a little bit more than four million bucks, so I'll mention that one in particular, that is for our SRF loan draw for the engineering services for our wastewater treatment plant, four million dollars. And otherwise, some requests for trail use, we've got a solicitor license, we've got some public hearings to be published, and setting some bid dates, so I would take a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second from Councilman E Conger, anyone have anything or any abstentions to be made on our consent counter items, yes sir?
I would abstain.
Through and through, alright. Uh, Jordan, make note that Councilman Nelson will be abstaining from our consent counter, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries with that abstention, zero old business here tonight, new business item, number one is a public hearing, possible approval of a new retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license to the One Legged Pheasant LLC, doing business as One Legged Pheasant, at seven twenty-three South Main Street. Doesn't look like anyone here is to speak on behalf or against it, could I get a motion from the council if someone was so inclined?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Lee Belt, second, Norv Strup, if anyone have anything before we take a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries, next is a public hearing, possible approval of a one day retail on sale wine and beer license for the Chamber Business After Hours, which will take place at the Refuge Retreats at seven eleven Lancelot Drive, and that will take place on October fifteenth. Someone care to make a motion to approve that one day retail on sale beer license?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Nelson, second, Councilman Ward, anyone have anything before we take a vote? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries, another similar one we've got here before us, it is a special one day retail on sale liquor, beer, and wine license for the Sir Thomas Club event at the Storybook Land Uncorked, that will take place on September fourth at Storybook Land. Move to approve. Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second from Councilman Norv Strup, anyone from the council have any final words before we take a vote on that one? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries, next we've got the first reading, possible approval of an ordinance, it's title twenty-five oh seven oh one, it is an ordinance which amends the zoning requirements for the Aberdeen City Code to include home daycares in administrative exceptions, I know Ken, you've been working on that one, walk us through what this will entail, please?
Thank you, Mayor, recently, we've been working with the community or the economic development department, on the finance office and other departments as to how to streamline the daycare process for licensing for home daycares. Uh, one of the time consuming processes is applying for a special exception through the board of zoning adjustment, which depending on how it lands on the calendar could take a month, month and a half for approval. Uh, we've determined that it is something that could be administratively approved, uh, we will take the time to send a buyer, building official and a fire marshal through to inspect the property, and we'll address any other zoning concern concerns with the property. This ordinance will also allow us to refer any concerning properties or addresses to the full zoning board for a hearing, um, if we determine that's necessary, staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ken, uh, got a motion, Ronan, second, Ward, and, um, so obviously there's the time component of things, this was dragging itself out, having to go to multiple boards for approvals in the past, um, we've seen less home daycares in, in the community than we'd seen in the past?
Seems like there's been fewer new ones popping up, yeah.
But the overall number of them has been on the decline.
Yeah, and we're not sure what that's a symptom of, if it's, uh, just overall people are not providing daycare services anymore, or if, you know, people get in it for while their children are young and then jump out of the system once their kids are old enough. So we're not sure, but hopefully we can streamline things to make sure we're not causing any kind of hindrance.
Thank you, and I appreciate the work on that, I know that it's dramatically in need of, uh, community wide, and it's, uh, it's something that will really benefit the community if we can get some more of these things up and going, so as easy as we can make it better off we are, any questions from the council?
I, I do, uh, previously, Ken, with the special exception, that was the, you could revoke the special exception in essence, pull their license if there was a problem with that, what's that mechanism on the backside if we do have a troublesome, what triggers that now?
Sure, so the administrative exception has all the same weight of, as a special exception, it could still be revoked, um, upon a hearing and a finding, um, it would probably go through the board of adjustment, um, otherwise, all of these daycares are provided, or daycare providers are required to be licensed by the city, and that can be dealt with through the licensing as well.
So the zoning board is an extra step we didn't need?
What we found is, for the most part, uh, daycares are readily approved, there's not a lot of concern with them, there's been one or two instances where I can recall ever having a lengthy debate at a public hearing over a daycare, um, and that's what we plan to weed out by, uh, reviewing the property for zoning, building, and fire issues before the administrative exception is approved. And, and again, if we, if we find a concern, we will refer it to the, to the board for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, if there's no further discussion from the council, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norv Strup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a possible first reading, but ordinance twenty-five oh seven oh three, which would repeal the ordinance regulating the recreation and hobby flying of drones, Ron, there had been consternation with, uh, with conflict with the FAA.
There had been, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try to stick to the script here, so I don't get too far off field on that, but, um, in the spring of twenty sixteen, the council was, was requested by the then city manager to adopt a drone ordinance, um, that was when, when it was kind of first starting to be what we thought might be the Wild West. And so, we, we, the council did in fact pass a regulation, uh, that was patterned in a large part on the city of Chicago's drone ordinance, but, um, though, I think, Mayor, when you came on board, there was a request for a review of that, we did conduct a review of the drone ordinance in twenty nineteen, and found that it was still a bit of the Wild West out there, some of the concerns, both federally and state, uh, regarding the regulation of these unmanned aircraft systems, was, was still not attentive to the two, to the concerns about voyeurism, for example, and trespass, and some invasions of privacy, and frankly, flight over, uh, over people and moving vehicles. But since that time, since twenty nineteen, there have been some real changes, and if you will note in the attachments that I provided as part of this, uh, agenda memo, uh, we saw that the state of South Dakota itself has, has done some significant work on this, and especially in twenty twenty-four, to address a lot of those concerns, we see that the FAA and the USDOT have, have addressed those concerns more clearly, um, the information I provided shows the FAA's response for operations over people, over moving vehicles, and at night, um, much improved by way of, of the regulate, the regulatory process, and frankly, the explanation for those people out there, um, operating. And, and this has been something that I've occasionally have, have had some enthusiasts reach out to us to ask us to review and to repeal, um, the, the last request did in fact, um, uh, cause me to do that, and to decide at that point that this can be, this can be repealed, we have not issued a single, um, citation for violations of our ordinance, we've had a couple of minor infractions, they were addressed very quickly, and frankly, um, sensibly, common sensibly, by our police officers, um, and the people right away realized that they were, they were acting in a way that even if we hadn't had the ordinance, if, if all we were relying on was state or federal law, we'd be fine now. So, uh, for that reason, um, I'm asking that the council essentially repeal the entire drone ordinance, and I've, I've set forth in the, in the ordinance, uh, those sections that would be repealed, and I, I can say that after my review, I'm comfortable making that recommendation that you repeal.
Move to approve.
I'll second. Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Johnson, any, uh, any questions from the council or thoughts, any grievances from the council, hanging on to this darn thing, alright, well good, I think it's a good move, too long coming, to be honest with you, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on the first reading?
Councilmember Norv Strup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries, one, second reading, I guess it'll be next week. Next, we've got a possible approval of our pay request number three for traffic twenty-four, or two thousand twenty-four oh one, which was at Third Avenue Southeast in Roosevelt, street traffic signal improvements, it's a hundred forty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, as well as a change order totaling three hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, both to Ringenberg Electric, Stu, how's that project coming along?
Thank you, Mayor, so those lights are up and operational now, um, we still have a little bit of, uh, programming to do, to, um, to get the, the timing just right on the phases, and we don't have, uh, pad push buttons yet, because there's some concrete that needs to be put in, which will happen this week, and then, um, by the middle of next week, the intersection will be completely done, and, uh, we're looking forward to having that signal, because we have now got, uh, left turn arrows in all four directions, which really should streamline the flow of traffic at that intersection, we've had a lot more, you know, a big increase in the volume of traffic on Roosevelt since that original, uh, signal was put in, in the eighties, I think, nineties, eighties? So, um, we're now kind of where we should be as far as how we're handling traffic passing through that intersection, so I'd recommend, uh, payment to Ringenbergs for this pay request.
I move to pay them.
Second.
Motion, Ronan, second, Nelson, um, so Stu, we've got the, uh, the old ones are still functional there, and those will just be removed when the?
Those are gone, the new ones are up and running as of Friday.
As of Friday, alright, and, um, and not that it directly relates, but all the signals that are on Sixth Avenue have been a talking point on the internets here, in the last few days, the state was intending to review those next year, but is that gonna be along with the bridge improvement project in twenty twenty-seven?
From what I understand, that is a twenty twenty-seven project, to you do that, maybe, Robin, you can shed a little light on that, you went to the STIP meeting?
So the, uh, the signal, there's gonna be signal work being done next year in preparation for what's called the adaptive system, the adaptive system will be put in after some of the newer equipment goes in, from what I understand, so, the adaptive is kind of tied to the bridge, but the signal work will be done next year.
Okay, good, good, there's a lot of intersections people are concerned about that under the dominion of the state, we've got our motion, we've got our second to pay these bills, which is the course at hand, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norv Strup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries, next we've got a possible approval of a, or, and authorize the city manager to sign the financial closeout for AIP Project Three, forty-six oh oh one, which is our airport rescue grant, ARPA, for the Aberdeen Regional Airport, Transportation Director Rich Crokel is here to walk us through what that entails, tell us about this closeout, Rich?
This will be the final, this will be the final of the COVID era, uh, grants, we had three grants that totaled up to nearly three and a half million dollars, uh, for use on payroll, equipment, uh, repairs, things like that, so, uh, the ARPA grant was the, the last one, and, uh, that was, uh, AIP Project Forty-Six, so we've, we've expended the total amount of one million one hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred eleven dollars on this grant, so we're asking for, uh, city manager to be authorized to sign that financial closeout.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second, Ward, any questions? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norv Strup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries, next we've got a possible approval of the following payments, as well as to authorize Robin to sign the pay estimates, Aaron Swan, invoice for material testing and quality assurance for seventy-six hundred and twenty dollars, Helms and Associates for administration and resident engineering for forty-one thousand nine hundred five dollars and twenty-three cents, and finally, Reedy Construction, pay estimate number two, for materials and work through June twenty-fourth, that's total four hundred thirty-seven thousand nine seventy-nine and six cents, uh, Rich, would you walk us through those respective invoices, please?
Yes, this is for the current AIP fifty-two, which is the general aviation reconstruction project, phase two, uh, this area encompasses the, what we call the front of, um, Quest Aviation, um, property, so, um, the project's moving along really nicely, uh, invoice number one for seven thousand six hundred and twenty, uh, Aaron Swan is the company that does the material testing and, and quality assurance, um, item two, uh, is invoice nineteen, in the amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred five dollars and twenty-three cents, and that's for Helms and Associates, uh, for resident engineering and administrative services, and invoice, uh, or item number three, which is pay estimate number two, to Reedy Construction, is four hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and six cents, and that is for materials and work completed, uh, through June twenty-fourth, um, the funding allocation for this project is ninety percent federal, five percent, uh, state, and five percent local, and we're asking the city manager to sign, uh, the financial documents.
Move to approve all three payments.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, second, Councilman Nelson, any questions about any of these, Jordan?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Foberg. Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norv Strup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye. Motion carries, next, possible approval of a payment to Helms for invoice number three, thirty-six hundred sixty-eight cents, as well as authorize city manager to sign that pay estimate, Rich?
Yes, sir, this covers two AIP, uh, pro, uh, project numbers fifty-three and fifty-four, um, and it has to do with the way the fund, the funding is doled out, uh, to the project, um, invoice number three for the amount of three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, um, is for Helms and Associates, uh, for, uh, yeah, the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars, um, funding allocation for this one is ninety-five percent federal, two and a half state, and two and a half city, and we're asking for city manager to be able to sign, uh, the financial documents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Councilman Lee Belt, second, Councilman Ward, any questions on this thirty-six hundred dollar payment, alright, Jordan?
Councilmember Norv Strup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion carries, next is our possible approval, approval of a payment to Helms for invoice number five, the amount is fifty-nine hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents, as well as to authorize the city manager to sign that pay estimate, Rich, one more, or, one of two final ones for you here tonight?
Right, okay, thank you, um, AIP Project Fifty-Five is the airport terminal, um, expansion project, uh, to be able to, um, move that, uh, CT eighty bag screener out of public view, um, this is, uh, the invoice number five is five thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars, sorry, five hundred, five, oh my, five thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents, um, this is for bidding services for Helms, uh, to help us through that project, um, funding sources for this project is SB one forty-four, at one point two million, and then, uh, it's, we've got some AIP money, um, at eight hundred thousand, so the local share is projected to be right at about sixty thousand dollars on this one, so we're asking for, um, city manager to be able to sign these financial documents as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Norv Strup, any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we'll start with you then, Mr. Nelson, what have you got?
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Um, my question, Rich, is, so we're relocating that bag screening machine?
Correct.
Did their protocols change, it, it was there, it was working, why are we moving it?
Um, part of the deal with that was, um, it needs to be out of public view, and when we were informed that we were gonna be able to get the CT eighty in our terminal, one of my stipulations was that TSA actually pay for the physical move of that machine, did that answer your question?
You, so TSA is paying to move it?
They're paying for the Raytheon, or, uh, whatever the company is now, to come in, take that machine apart, move it into the back, recalibrate it, and set it up.
Sure, and, and I'm, maybe I'm missing it, local share is projected at sixty thousand?
Sure. And, and I'm, uh, maybe I'm missing it. Local share is projected at sixty thousand. So they put it there. We're now we're helping finance to move it?
I guess that's one way to look at it. Yes.
I just, I just don't understand why.
I'm not sure I'm going to understand the rest of your question.
Okay, I, I just don't understand why it was put there. We're relocating it now.
Yeah.
And then we're assuming some of those costs. Cause TSA put it there initially, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But they're not going to, they're not going to pay for the build out of the new room.
Okay, that's our responsibility. Thank you. That explains it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Foley, did you have an additional question or was it the same territory?
Yeah, it's actually just an overall question of, I've gotten a few questions from constituents asking what all is happening at the airport? Cause there's a few different things that are happening. So Rich could give us just an overview. Um, I guess the biggest question I've gotten is, is, is there going to be any more space in the TSA area? Cause it's a little tight in there.
The, the, uh, checkpoint is the room you're referring to, correct, Councilor?
Correct.
Yes, there's.
Like when you go through, um, after you show your ID?
Okay. So after you enter the, the, um, TSA checkpoint, uh, we have no work planned for that. That work was completed in two thousand twelve. So the TSA space was literally doubled in size at that point. We had a.
So the overview of everything that's happening is just moving?
Moving the CT-80 bag screener into the back.
But there's no addition happening for that to go into? It's just you're just rearranging existing space?
Correct. And adding, we're adding, um, about sixty-eight hundred square feet to move the current baggage handling equipment for the airline into the new space to the north. Okay.
Not going to the far end of where the baggage claim is right now?
That's correct.
And then the parking lot scenario?
The parking lot, I'll have, uh, better dates for you tomorrow. I'll be able to put something out. But we're moving forward with that. Finally, we've got our FAA money.
So parking the entranceway and the baggage claim area pretty much synopsizes what we've currently got going. But that apron project on the south side of the building?
The apron, so we've got actually three projects going on out there. We've got the general aviation apron, AIP fifty-two. And then we've got the, the, uh, well, the terminal reconstruction was awarded this year. We're not starting that until April first because of contractor concerns with obtaining structural steel. And then the parking lot and terminal access road reconstruction will be starting up in the next couple of weeks.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Foberg?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote then, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, possible approval of the following AIP project, preconditioned air unit acquisition. First part of this is the request council to tentatively award the AIP project to Oshkosh Aerotech of Roy, Utah, in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen thousand. That will be contingent on FAA approval of the various grants and waivers. The next is our request council approval to authorize the city manager to sign that necessary documentation and the contract documents after our review. Rich? Preconditioned air.
Preconditioned air. So this AIP fifty-seven, uh, precondition air. We, we currently have preconditioned air, uh, that we provide to the aircraft. However, it's in the form of a tow behind diesel generator operated, um, heating and cooling unit. So this was, this, uh, project is part of a VALE grant, V-A-L-E, stands for voluntary airport low emissions. And what we will do is install this, um, preconditioned air unit on top of the jet bridge. It'll mount up there and it'll do the same thing as the, um, the tow behind unit without the diesel emissions. So in the winter, it'll keep the air, uh, aircraft warm inside. In the summer, it'll keep it cool. So, um, uh, JBT, uh, sorry, it's now called Oshkosh. So the, the jet bridge was built by JBT Aerotech. Um, and when we put that jet bridge in, we, we thought about the future. Um, this PC air unit was, um, a bid alternate two or three, and we just kind of ran out of money. So we did not do, uh, ac- acquire the actual preconditioned air unit. But we did get the infrastructure put into place. So all of the electrical that comes from upstairs in the mechanical room is already in place, just awaiting the, the new PC air unit to be plugged in. Um, the grant amount is two hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And, uh, uh, that'll be contingent upon, uh, FAA approval of the Buy American waiver and receipt of the grant offer. And we're requesting, uh, city council's approval for city manager to sign all those financial documents.
Move to approve items one and two.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, second, Councilwoman Lee Belt. Does anyone have any further questions beyond Rich's explanation of, uh, of this project and cost, potential cost? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for joining us tonight. Mr. Crokel, always good to see you. Next, we've got the review and approval of our, uh, claims here tonight, which is the bills list for this week, July twenty-first. Take a motion.
To move. Second.
Motion, Norvstrup. Second, E. Conger. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote for the bills?
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain on this.
The entire, okay. Um.
I can, I guess, I can abstain from the payment to Banner Associates?
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Cause we're run, want to quickly run us through the new criteria for approvals.
That would be wonderful.
I will, Mr. Mayor. A group of municipal attorneys have been, uh, proposing significant changes to Title Nine of the South Dakota Code, which is the title dealing with municipal law. And I noticed that that started in two thousand and twenty-four, but it was for some, uh, chapters that really didn't apply. But in this most recent, uh, slate of amendments in two thousand and twenty-five, uh, it did involve one of the, one of the statutes regarding how, um, votes must be taken. And it requires that, um, the majority vote of all the aldermen is necessary to pass an ordinance proposal that expends or appropriates money. So that's a change. It used to be just a, just a majority. And we had interpreted that as a majority of those council members who were present and voting. But now with this change that went into effect July first, for, uh, motions to spend money, um, we will now need five votes in order to pass that. And I know that we've had a longstanding prac, well, a practice for the last few years about being able to abstain from individual portions of these, you know, routine type bill paying votes. And that can, can continue. But if we get to that place where we don't have five people voting, um, for a particular item, um, that item might not be approved. And we'd have to push that back to maybe the next time. And hopefully we have enough council members present. Today, we're, we're fine. We had a full slate. So, uh, Councilman Nilson abstaining isn't going to be a problem. But I just want everybody to be aware that that's something we need to keep our eyes open. If we have, if we're down to a bare five and one person abstains on a particular, uh, bill, then that bill won't get approved. So. And I will, I guess while I'm making the announcement here, um, we also have our council handbook that we've adopted. And that frankly is our bible for purposes of how we conduct meetings. And we can do things that are more restrictive than state law. We can't do things that are less restrictive. And this is one of those things where we would need to change our council handbook to make sure it does reflect that we need a majority of five to, to pass these kinds of motions. There will be some other items in the council handbook that I'll be proposing. But I'll be submitting an amendment to the council, proposed amendment to the council of our handbook, probably in August, just to make sure we're touching everything and clearing all these up. And the council, of course, at that time can decide if it wants to, to be more restrictive. For example, roll call voting, but it wouldn't have to. We could pass, uh, we could comply with state law by, by, uh, following nine dash eight dash ten. It's been recently amended. So there's a long winded explanation of, of, of the change.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. It's always good to be apprised of changes as they come to be. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on the full list of bills and anyone can abstain from particular line items or the whole thing if we've got the votes to support the approval?
Councilmember Ronane.
I need to abstain as to the payments to Neil and Joel Bellica, Climate Control, Plains Commerce Bank, Swanson Electric and Rosika Fencing. But I vote aye as to all other payments.
Councilmember Foberg.
I just need to abstain the payments for the DecoTobate tips.
Councilmember.
Otherwise, aye.
Councilmember Lee Belt.
I vote for each and every one of them.
Ward.
Will abstain from all of them. Need to look at all those clients he's got. Holy smokes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Uh, abstain from the Banner Associates payment, but aye on the remaining.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
I'll abstain from Climate Control and Sewer Duck. Aye to the rest. Motion does carry. Next, we've got our city managers report. Robin, what have you got for us this evening?
Few items. Surprisingly, there was not a, um, certificate of appreciation given out in the last two weeks, which I don't know that that's ever happened. But, uh, it looks like I've got a pretty good slate coming up here in the next few weeks. So, uh, the mayor does not have to remember any names for tonight then. Uh, the discussion, we had, we had some staff discussions on planning for the two hundred and fifty year celebration next year. That's coming up. In addition to that, I believe we've got, uh, the ARC is going to have their fifty year. There's, there's, uh, a few of them next year. So next year's going to be a big year for celebration. So there are some folks that want to, uh, make sure we're coordinating things so we're not stepping on each other's toes because not all are going to be city functions. Uh, did attend the downtown concert last, actually it was a week and a half ago. Uh, saw a number of you down there and it was, it was a lot of fun. And there will be another one coming up this Thursday. So, uh, I'd encourage you to attend if you've got a chance. Uh, we did have discussions. I, I've had a couple of discussions with potential applicants for my job, trying to pick my brain to see why I'm leaving those types of things. Uh, we did have some discussions on the water tower bid. And I know that, uh, Councilman Nilson had some questions on that. Uh, did you want to?
We can discuss.
Okay, okay. Uh, we did talk about, uh, some cable peg, uh, things that I think Jordan has, uh, brought you up to speed on here. And then we did have, uh, a couple wins, uh, water discussions here lately with, with our consultant and, uh, our senate leaders and their staff. So it's been busy. And then of course, last week, we also had the, uh, statewide transportation improvement plan presentation. That was done a little differently with a virtual, uh, option this time through the DOT. And that was, um, that went very well, I thought, and, and, uh, got just as much out of it as we would have face to face. So I think it was all good. And that's all I've got.
Thank you for, uh, that appraisal. And if anyone was interested in that job of city manager, maybe make note of the sheer amount of meetings that Robin just rattled off and having attended in the last week. That is a big portion of the job. No question about it. We do have an executive session. So we'll take a little bit of time to, uh.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I just, I take a, a second and just give thanks, um, to the crews who constructed the roadway from central, um, the Melgar Road from, from Highway twelve to central. Very well done. Um, the striping in particular, like laser accurate, beautiful. Very impressed.
Thank you. We will pass that on. That, uh, those are things that make us proud. So yes, thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, well done.
Good recognition for sure. Thanks for bringing that up. All right. We'll take a few minutes and clear the room for our executive session to discuss some personnel matters and, uh, some legal counsel about.